At 6 o'clock, let's call the meeting, the February 2nd meeting to order.
You guys ready?
Is everybody ready? Great. Item number one, set adjust agenda. Do we have?
I think we got everything. Yep, check. Check. Check, check, check.
Okay. So, no adjustments to the agenda. We have no audience. I don't see anybody else online, so we'll ahead and skip communication of the audience. We have select board to approve minutes of the regular select board meeting, January 19th, 2023, minutes of the public hearing, January 19th, 2023, and the minutes of the special select board meeting of January 24th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Eric just motioned to approve all of them.
Move to approve both.
Okay.
Second?
Any discussion? Great. Thank you for writing such great minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes of January 19th and January 34th?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, ayes have it. We have the town manager's report given by David Upson.
Just heard the door shut. Shall we wait?
Sure.
See if it's Danny?
Oh, Danny called and said he's not coming tonight.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So carry on.
That's not Danny, okay. So... Quick report here. The town of Woodbury has agreed to compensate us in the amount of $6,000 a year for plowing West Woodbury and grading two times in the summer. We will take over the plow route going forward for the rest of this winter for $3,000. We assume that it was about halfway through the winter. And then, we're not gonna do the trade of labor. They have a, you know, three-man crew. We have our guys. They need to be in Woodbury working on road projects in the summer and not hauling our sand.
Okay.
This'll just cover our costs to do that part of the roads in West Woodbury. I need to provide Hardwick Electric Board of Commissioners with a few dates in March that would work for a joint meeting with the select board. Amanda's gonna send out a doodle poll, so we'll get that scheduled for March. And then, we have $3,000 in the FY23 budget for fireworks for Spring Fest. We've decided not to do fireworks because of the cost. With the increase in the minimum show to 6,000 and opting out of the fundraising for the remaining 3,000, I would like to reallocate the current budget amount of $3,000 to be donated to Kiwanis for Spring Fest activities. I think in the future, we should just have a line item in the budget for Spring Fest.
And I think when we decided against fireworks, that was the intention?
Okay. I just need a formal, like...
Yep, go for it.
Go for it. Okay.
Do we, we don't need a formal vote for that, do we, Eric? Just a...
The board generally agrees that that's a great idea.
Okay. And then, Tracy Martin submitted the downtown transportation fund grant for the additional 200,000 for the pedestrian bridge project. This grant opportunity became available to us because we are now, don't mean to steal your thunder. We are now designated downtown, so those funds are made available to us.
It's been on the news. People have been coming today.
Good.
And when do we hear about that?
Probably, the state's kind of delayed on their announcements for grants, so I would say probably a month, but I'm not sure. I don't know exactly.
A month?
That's not bad.
Yeah, maybe.
I used to nine months.
It's an unknown thing.
Yeah. Flip a coin.
Maybe April, yeah.
Um, that's what I got.
Awesome. Any questions for Opie? Great, that was a quick one.
Yeah, you like that?
Thank you. Alright, should we come back for, is Tom coming in?
I don't know.
Do you have anything to report on roads?
They pushed back the banks on some of the roads today, or yesterday, maybe, and they've had some minor breakdowns. Tom's truck just got new springs, but I think everything is up and running right now. They're probably out in the morning. I think we're supposed to get a little bit of something tonight.
Yep.
But, it's about it.
I just want, I think the roads have been really, have been super on top of it this year, and it's been really appreciated. Thank you. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening.
We're cruising through the agenda. Great, so next we have the Hardwick Police Department report given by Mike Henry.
So, we've had issues with equipment lately. That's been a big thing. We got three renters that we had issues with. We sent them in to get repaired, got them back, got one back. Still have the same problems. We had to send them back again. So, we have our watch guard system, which is an in-car camera system. Same thing, that malfunctioned, so we're sending that out to get repaired. That's not looking good because we talked to the company today. They said, oh, it sounds like the whole thing just... So, we got, we're looking at probably $900 to repair that, just that one item right there. Then, we have the hybrid car that we have. We had a battery that went bad in it, so we repaired that. Didn't know there's two batteries. They decided, looks like the other battery's bad as well, so we had to replace that. So, equipment-wise, we've been having a few problems. But, on a positive note, we did get the snowmobile patrol up and running this last weekend. And, you know, we're out there, we're out all weekend long. I think we have a good presence out there. We have a lot of inspections. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 inspections that were done on the snowmobiles plus contacts. I forgot to grab the numbers on that, but we had a lot of contacts out there. So, that was good. Hopefully that people realize that we're on the route to out there to get them to slow down. That helped. We have a... I know that Danny had a question.
Danny's not here.
Oh, he's not here?
Yeah.
Alright.
I'm sorry, one sec. Tracy's waiting to get into the meeting.
Like, I had a really quick question about the hybrid. Are any of those pieces of equipment under warranty?
No.
Awesome.
It's a 2020, and the batteries are not under warranty, if you believe that.
So, the explanation I got from Memorial Valley Ford is that they, I guess they warranty, we, when we went to replace the first battery, we were within the warranty window by days. And because it was a police cruiser, and we have all the extra electronics in there, they frowned upon doing a warranty because of the added electronics.
And yet, they sell them for that purpose.
Right. So, that's, that's what I got from, on that one, on the hybrid, on the first battery. But, it was out, it's out of warranty now, because it was like a couple days.
It should, it really shouldn't have been out of warranty. Didn't want to get into that too much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was not happy that they weren't gonna cover it. Because when we got it back after the first battery was fixed, we still had a light on. Called them about that, so it was still an issue.
It's not Memorial Valley Ford, it's actually Ford.
Right.
They approved the warranties, so they tried.
So, senior center, we're, you know, we're a little bit busier with that now, with people coming in, so I have a schedule for that. The people who are mostly using that, they can get in, we schedule electronically. I can allow certain people in. I just can't allow everybody in on the schedule because it's just a Google Docs schedule that I have. But, if somebody wants to get on the schedule for that, they can contact the town manager, contact me or Scott Gagnon, and see if there's an opening, if they want to use that. We really want to make sure that space is being utilized. The taxes, AARP will be up there, starting tomorrow, I believe, Friday?
Yeah.
And so, they'll be doing Tuesdays and Fridays at the senior center.
Sorry, Eric, were you saying something?
No, I think somebody just popped in, and they're just not on mute.
And that's a free service, right, Mike, the AARP?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. It's nice to see you in person. Any questions for Mike? Great, thank you. Alright, so we've moved on to item number one, which is select board to consider appointing Emily Hirschberger to the Hardwick Energy Committee. And I saw...
I, so, I asked Emily to provide me with an email stating why she wanted to be on the energy committee. I asked her to come to the meeting tonight. She has a board meeting down at the co-op, so I told her I would read the email.
Correct.
And I think, we all know Emily, and I think this email and the fact that she's doing, she has other duties tonight. So, Emily is, I'm interested in joining the Hardwick, Hardwick's Energy Committee to help Hardwick with energy efficiency initiatives. Energy efficiency will be focused, will be a focus in my work and at home over the next few years. With the help of Bill Chidsey, the co-op is working towards significantly reducing its energy use over the next couple of years. I purchased my home here in Hardwick two years ago, and it needs insulation and energy work. As I explore energy savings activities and initiatives for my home and work, I want to help my community with the information I learn. I've been living around the Hardwick area for about 20 years, and I've been living in the village for five, home and work. I would like to help my community, so. It's from Emily.
One just really quick question before we make a motion. Are there terms for the energy committee? Are there different seats and different terms, or it's all one year?
It's a free-for-all.
It's a free, okay.
Yeah.
Who else here?
Bill, do you know, do you have a?
That will be on our agenda as we gain members. We'll have full life officer.
I think this is the first official member, right?
This is the beginning.
Okay, so if we appoint Emily, it would just be for a term of the energy committee?
Yeah.
There's just, okay.
When, when defined.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, motion to appoint Emily Hirschberger to the energy committee. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, we don't have anybody else. Awesome. Congratulations, Emily. Thank you. Alright, item number two, we have Bill Chidsey here, I believe, to talk about the energy committee work with the window dressers to better sustain the heating of town buildings. That's probably why you're here, Bill.
I'm wondering, is there any questions about the window dressers program from Maine? You may have already got the flyer, but you know... I didn't want to take much time, because I know it's budget time, but I have been, I have known about it for a number of years, but their president lives in Glover. His name's Jack. And he and Kevin from Crasberry both have big programs in their towns. So, we are lucky to be neighbors and have that type of leadership to learn from, to do a good program here right from the start. I want you to, I want to just take a moment to thank Diana Petuski and Paul Fix. Diana's from Woodbury. And Paul, they reached out to window dressers, and that's how it came to me. To their credit. And we had our first informational get-together about two and a half weeks ago in this building, and it was well-attended, 15 residents. My biggest job in it is to find members who will take the training to know how to do it properly. And there's quite a, quite a good instructional resource on that, but I think I have what it takes to make sure we get that organizational work done first. And I'd like to come to the select board about it, because I'd like, I'd like it to be supported by the energy committee, so because of that, we want to make sure our reputation is perfect and that you don't get complaints.
Is this, are you wanting to support an educational program or a product?
We should press these all over.
We have those. We have those. They're in the...
No, they're different. They're different. And you can, which you allow them.
Okay.
Also, color.
So, window dressers is a non-profit. And the way it works is that a town like ours or an organization can use their system to help people get inside storm windows.
Their system being what?
Their system is a system of training people how to build the windows themselves and keep it organized so that when, let's say a homeowner wanted three window inserts, a volunteer has to be trained to go and measure those windows and know how to get an invoice for them for how much they cost. And then, that homeowner has to agree to participate in a community build organization or a... So, the window dresser sends tools to our town. We get to keep them for about a week or 10 days while we organize the building, and then the homeowner takes the windows home. So, it's quite, it's an interesting process. There are details about it on their website. And I don't know if I've answered your question or not.
Yeah, it's basically both. It's both...
Right, it's, it's, and if the homeowner, you say that the homeowner has to participate in the build. Suppose the homeowner is a good old lady who's never used a hammer.
Well, there are many, there are many subchapters on subjects just like that. So, if a person's unable to participate, that's accepted. If a person is unable to pay, that is accepted, and window dressers actually gives away 30% of their trainings and materials. And both Crasberry and Glover, organizations in town donate to the program and make more available for people who can't afford it.
Okay.
And that would include, of course, seniors. A whole number of people would fit into that category. So, and on our end, we are completely volunteers. No one gets on any type of payroll or staff. Order is on to our vision.
Bill, what is your goal for having this start? What's your kind of timeline?
Well, the trainings are the most important part, and getting commitments from community members to take those roles. So, one, we have to get the word out through emails and gatherings that it's possible, what's available, and see who will sign up, and then get them trained. So, I'm thinking half of the energy committee meeting will be for this project, and then in-between energy committee meetings will be an email. So, twice a month, we'll make contact.
So, the goal would be to maybe have this a build by next fall, like this fall or something like that? Great.
Window dressers, actually, is part-time. They close down for part of the year, so the measuring and the order-taking happens in the spring and summer. The orders go in in August, and then you get in their schedule for tomorrow tools and your event. And they have regional managers that are there to make sure you get it.
So, basically, what you're, you're bringing this to us is, this event wouldn't really happen until August or the fall. It's really just to let us know that this is something the energy committee is working on. Is there anything that you need from the select board other than a thumbs up, that this sounds like a great program?
Well, that, that helps. And I wonder if we're like-minded and I'd like it led by a town committee rather than an ad hoc. And I would take full responsibility for the accounting things to take place. I mean, the idea that we're gifting, you know, and that we're taking money and sending it to Maine, I'll set up a little quick books on that, so it's transparent.
Yes, that's, that would be a good question for Casey, right? If it's...
If they're collecting money under the town.
If they're collecting money.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like a good next step, Bill, would be to talk to Casey, and then maybe even see how Crasberry, because I know Crasberry, it is the energy committee that also runs the same program, how that works financially with the town.
That's high on my list, and because Casey's a volunteer.
Oh, great.
So, then, I have the last thing very quickly. This is the municipal energy resilience program, and these I look forward to have, and I don't even have, but I'll be working to make sure that both Tracy and David are, you know, informed of everything that I find out about this. This, this is a lot of money for this town to do some very, very positive action. I must, basically, it looks like to me this year, the energy committee will be after that, as hard as we can be, and go off this window dressers program, and be better year than last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work, Bill. Any other questions or discussion about the energy committee's work? Great, this is a good one. Item three, select board to consider approval of a liquor license application, and we also have Tanya Chase on the phone to lead.
Hi, Anna. So, we have a application for a first and third-class liquor license for a new restaurant located in 41 South Main with Coke and Fork. And actually, Mark Rau is on this tonight, if anybody has any questions for him.
This is taking, this is where the scale house was?
Yeah.
The scale house was.
And you think you're gonna open for her?
Did Eric say something? Yeah, I think Mark Winnie thought he was gonna open. And Mark's muted.
Mark, can you hear us?
There we go, figuring this all out. Hi, guys.
Hi, Mark.
My guest. Hey. Um, I don't have anything to add, really. Just, we're gonna open up hopefully May to mid-May. Got a lot of work to do in there, so.
Great.
Can you guys share me?
Yes.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mark. Great.
I hope we grant them a license.
Can, what's the difference between the first class and third class? One is to sell it, one is to serve it? Is that...
No, one's for beer and wine.
First is to sell and serve beer and wine, and third is spirits.
Got it.
Got it. So, Wiz made a motion...
I hope that we approve both first and third-class liquor licenses for the... For the cork.
Great. Eric, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take that as a second, because Wiz made a motion before you, but I'm gonna consider that a second. All those in favor of approving the liquor license application for the cork and fork, please say aye.
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 Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you, Mark.
Go back out in the sun.
Item four, select board to consider approving the Better Connections Grant Resolution, and I believe we have Tracy Martin on the call as well to talk us through this. Great.
I'm just gonna give anybody who has questions about the program.
Thanks for calling in, Tracy. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you, can you put Mark on mute, or did he leave? There you go.
He's on mute.
Okay. I think he did.
I mean, I'm familiar with this already. Do, does anybody else not know what this is?
Eric, do you have any questions?
He's muted.
He looks confused.
If there aren't any questions, we'll just, Sherry, do you want to...
I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the Better Connections Grant Resolution. Second?
All those in favor of approving the Better Connections Grant Resolution, please say aye.
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 Good deal.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Item five, business manager to present the FY23 second quarter budget update.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Casey.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Alright, so this is the budget update for the first six months of the fiscal year. And so, revenues are pretty much on track. We've got a couple categories. Ran a little ahead of schedule, as you can see in the summary. We would expect to be at 50%. Overall, we're about considering our expected tax revenues were just under 52%, so we are on track for that. Questions about revenue?
I love the grant revenue.
I don't know if you're screen sharing, or if I should or not.
Yeah, Amanda was just screen sharing, yeah.
I would say, I love the grant revenue, that we budgeted $400, and we've got essentially $16,000 come in.
Right.
Not bad.
And 4,000%, right?
Right, 4,000%.
And Casey, I just want to quickly explain why we keep the budget low. You've done it before, but just as helpful. For the, for the grant revenue.
I, I didn't catch that, I'm sorry.
Do you just want to, do you just want to quickly explain why we have the grant revenue budgeted at $400?
Because the only real guaranteed grant revenue, because we know about in that category, is the Greenup Day Grant, which is $400. The other grant revenue that we received were two ones that we had not planned for, the LCT Grant, I mean, it's the post-danning grant. We don't generally budget for the grants, because we don't always know what we're gonna get.
Perfect, thanks.
It still looks good.
Any other questions about the budget update? Great, well, thank you, Casey.
Expenses?
Okay, I'll move on to expenses, if that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, so, again, we should be at about 50% for expenses. We are actually slightly over at 53.45. However, I will note that all of our VCT insurances, workers comp, passive, and unemployment, have been paid all the way through 630, so those expenses are done. So, it's not, even though we are a little bit over, it's not really cause for concern right at the moment. Office is slightly over budgeted due to insurances, conference dues, and especially computer services. And I think I mentioned this when we were working on the budget, that our computer services would need to probably double, which we did for the fiscal year 24 budget, because we have network annual fees, email accounts, IT services, the monthly records room for COT. So, there's a lot of things that are encompassed in that category, so we will increase accordingly in the fiscal year 24 budget. Buildings are a little bit ahead of schedule, but again, the insurance is paid. Our department is a little bit over due to under repairs and increased fuel costs. Police department is ahead of schedule, insurance, legal expenses, cost grade expense, which is offset by revenue. Trails is slightly over, but it's such a small budget that, again, it's not really a concern. But at this point, we're running about 3.5% over, but all the insurances are paid, so no cause for concern. We'll have a lot better idea of where we're gonna land, probably after, at the next report, on March 31st, we'll have a better idea, but not a real major cause for concern right now.
Is it, why is that blurry at the bottom?
Casey, this line for appropriations, are they the appropriations we make that the town votes on at town meeting? The ones last year?
Yes. And so, the actual, basically, people are supposed to submit invoices or make a formal request to disperse those funds, and I really just haven't heard from a lot of people. Since I did this report, though, it seems like in the last week or so, I've gotten a few that have come in. The rescue squad came through recently, and we got a few more appropriations, but it really just depends on, you know, people need to ask for the money, because I have to have invoices to pay them, so I don't just automatically do so. So, it's just a matter of them sending or asking for us to disperse that.
So, if their organization had an appropriate... So if their organization had an appropriation approved, they should get in touch with you to get the money?
Absolutely.
Send a letter request, basically.
Um, Casey, would it be possible at the March update to, to do a similar update of the organizations that have requested the ARPA funds that we gifted?
We can, yes. There is gonna be something in the town report that will show, um, what's been dispersed so far. Um, but I'm happy to provide some report to you. We have dispersed while the wastewater plant, 166,000, and the other 300 is due, so. But yes, I can certainly provide something too. I do, I did do a ARPA report in the town report.
Okay, great, thank you.
When does the town report come out?
They get mailed on February 21st, maybe, something like that. I've already turned it into a printer. The proof will be here tomorrow. Um, they have the mailing list, so then I'll just get printed. I think they get mailed on the 21st of February.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Casey? Great, well, thank you so much, Casey.
Sure, no problem. I'll hop on and go finish cooking myself, so have a great night, everyone.
You too. Alright, next, we have, um, item six, Select Board to Consider Approval of One-Year NEPBA Contract for the Police Department Bargaining Unit.
You want a summary?
Yes, please.
So, um, what we did was, we're gonna do a one-year contract.
Okay.
Um, we revamped the pay scale to be slightly more, we agreed to be slightly more competitive with some of the area, um, some of the other departments in the area. So we don't wanna be really low or really high. For example, you know, Mooresville, or Moores, um, muppets are starting rate with no experience is $32 an hour, and we're at 23 for our starting. And we got rid of, um, one of the steps, so we go right from, instead of academy and training, we just go training, which is, includes the academy and FTO, the FTO period. Um, so with the revamp of the pay scale, um, we added, uh, the, the employees agreed from 18 to 20% to employee-paid healthcare benefits. So though, that was a, you know, they're in line with everybody else. Um, the town, the road crew agreed to the same thing, although their contract's not ready yet. Um, we added fitness pay, so, um, twice a year, was it twice a year or once a year? Once a year. Um, they can do, um, a rowing machine with, uh, set standards, and they can get a bonus pay. Um, so it's an incentive to stay in shape. And, um, and then we did a special duty pay. So if someone, um, when it's approved by the chief, uh, someone gets certified to be an FTO or a use-of-force instructor, um, they would get a, an annual stipend, which will be paid out, uh, I think quarterly. Um, so, and then not everybody can be, you know, we're not gonna have everybody in the department trained to do use-of-force, so it's, it's kinda just, you, you get picked based on your skills and your performance in the job. Um, we, um, we included the Juneteenth holiday in the paid holidays. Um, the, the guys agreed to equity training in return for that, so we're gonna be, um, doing that. They already do, but through the Police Academy for, through the Training Council, they already do some equity training, but we're gonna just add to it. Um, that's about it. And then we'll re, go ahead.
Um, why one-year this time?
Just because the way, like, we ran into some problems in the, the other contract with pay scales being too low. And so if, the, the way things are going in law enforcement, if there's another huge jump for, or, or it goes the other way, we wanna still remain competitive and not be out of the water, so we figured a one-year contract so we can just stay on the mark with what's going on, you know, across, you know, out, out in the rest of the world.
It's typically three years, is that?
Typically, yeah. One or three years.
Any other questions?
Can I, can I move that we accept the, um, or we ratify the contract, or, yeah?
Second.
She just authorized me to sign the contract after you agreed.
Yes, that's what I meant.
As presented.
All those in favor of authorizing our town manager to.
Sign the contract.
Sign the one-year contract for the Police Department Bargaining, Bargaining Unit, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Alright, item seven, we have the Select Board to Consider Approving a Banner Application for Hardwick Farmers Market to be hung on Wilkett Street, May 12th through October 7th. They did this last year, right? Was there, yeah.
So who?
Second.
It's a tie. Oh, that's a tie. That's a tie. We have to do rock, paper, scissors for that one. Great, we have, um, Amanda, did you, what did you wanna do for a second? You said Wiz, okay, great. So, um, all those in favor of approving the banner application, please say aye.
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 Great, thank you. Item eight, we have Select Board to Consider a New Road Name for the property off of Hopkins Hill.
And then there's a proposal of Sweetgrass Lane. Is that right?
Yes.
So we had to do this, you wanna give them the summary?
Sure.
Okay, we had to do this because there's more than, um, three houses on the road, and we're required to, to sign a new road name.
Why does it have private behind it?
Because it's a private road. We don't.
They don't plow.
We don't flower, okay.
It's a, it's a, essentially, it's a driveway that serves multiple residents. And there's a threshold with the state of Vermont on how many residents.
Yep, right.
So earlier this week, there was a list of proposed names. Did the residents come in with this as their, as their preference?
They did, yes. They came in yesterday.
Okay.
Great, so all we have to do is approve it, right?
I, um, I move that we approve the name Sweetgrass Lane, private road. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Alright. Excellent. That was our last item. Next, we have Select Board Reports.
Nothing to me.
I have a short one.
Great, go ahead, Eric.
Uh, I just wanna say I heard from a resident, um, last week about noise and smell from the silvills on the rail, and I suggested, she also reached out to Ken Brown and asked, I suggested she also reach out to Jackie Casino, um, who's the, um, person at V-Trans who's responsible for the rail trails. That's it, that's my thing.
Thanks, Eric.
Oh, should I do another?
Yeah, you can.
We got time.
Do it be yellow, dude? I'm sorry.
That hasn't been announced.
Yellow Barn, moving.
You guys are making serious eye contact through the.
Eric cannot see you, I guarantee it.
No, so, so just that Yellow Barn is progressing, you know, we got a bid that, um, we sent a letter of intent that we want to accept, and, um, we're just, there's a lot of detail to work through, but it's moving forward.
Good news.
It's really exciting.
Good news.
Thanks for all your hard work on that, Eric. Sherry, did you have a Select Board report?
Well, the townhouse will open as of March 1st is our lease, so I haven't said anything about it, but we probably need to start planning for that. I'm not sure if Wayne is planning to come in and open things up as far as the plumbing goes, all that stuff, just keeping it in mind.
Yep.
I wonder if we shouldn't have said something about warming shelters with the cold coming?
Yeah, that's what my question is, too.
Is there, uh?
Typically, if there's power outages.
Right, oh, okay.
Yep.
Should we just make any kind of announcement about that, or, I don't know? That would be part of your deal.
One night?
Yeah.
One day?
Is it? I thought it was like all weekend and we were gonna be in the deep freeze. No?
No.
Well, that makes me very happy.
It's, it'll be a little windy, and it's February in Vermont.
Right.
I suppose so.
It's not 40 below.
Ready to move on to new business, then? I got something.
I think we're getting a little soft.
Alright, um, so, we have, any other Select Board reports? We got new business, old business?
I got new business. So the Preservation Trust is reinstating their apparent tradition of a Preservation Trust Bus Tour, where they, 30 to 35 people, I guess the board and, I'm not sure who all. But Ben Doyle contacted me because, uh, they want to make a stop in Hardwick for their bus tour. Uh, it's on February 15th. They're gonna be here between, uh, 10:30 and 10:40 or so for about 15 minutes downtown. Um, I'm gonna greet them because Opey will be somewhere warm, right? No? Not yet. So Opey and I'll greet them, and I think Tracy. Uh, they wanted to know about the pedestrian bridge progress. Um, they wanted to know about the, what was happening with the Gazette Building. So I've asked the Civic Standard folks to prepare some kind of little something, and I was gonna put together sort of a packet that they will get to take home, take with them, uh, with information about downtown and stuff. And then they're going on to the Yellow Barn, uh, and I don't know whether you can be there, Eric, otherwise I think they were gonna ask, Ben was gonna ask Allison if she could be there, but might be nicer if you were there, just saying.
What, what's the date?
February 15th, right about 10.
Two Wednesdays.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that should be fine.
Yeah, so I'll be in touch about it, but, um.
Great.
It's kinda nice to be on their scheduled stop. So we were gonna talk with Tom about figuring out where they can park their bus that, you know, maybe in the diner parking lot, roping off an area so that it's, makes it easy for them to get out and walk downtown and get a cup of coffee or something. I don't know. But it's a good thing.
That's awesome.
New business, that's all.
Did you find out where they were coming from?
I haven't yet, no.
Okay, um, and, and I just wanna go back to the lodging for the cold weather. If someone is struggling with lodging and needs warmth, the 211 number, you can get vouchers for lodging, if anybody's watching that needs, that has any questions for, about that, or anybody that comes across somebody. 211, when it's this cold, you get vouchers for lodging.
Great.
That's when it's 15 or, uh, 15 degrees or less. I think it's, I think that's the threshold for housing vouchers.
Is there any way for us to throw that up on, I know that we have the sign up.
We can put it on the website.
It'd be great to put it on the website if anybody's looking.
Yep.
Great, any other new business, old business?
I guess not.
I guess not. Alright, that is, uh, the end of our meeting at.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Quarter to seven.
At 6:44.
Eric, what the heck?
What?
Why does it last so long when he's here?
Eric's frozen.